I call this meeting of the Divinity and Penitentiary Division Board of Trustees to order at 7:02 PM. Let the record show that a form of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in the courts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Let the record show that trustees Chris Davis, Carrie James, Ali Biggie House, and Henry Moreno, and Nancy Pepper are present. Do we have any citizens other than?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to do a little switch on the agenda tonight. We have one point of business that we need to take care of, and we'll just take a couple minutes, so if you don't mind, we'll go to that. Consider and take possible action to approve a payment for special education playground from the Escher Funds.
Yes ma'am, our operations department tasked with bidding services to provide installing inclusive playground at Seaview Elementary. Got the bids in, and we would request that you approve $93,470.3 cents as a work, as completed in December 18th, 2014.
I mean, I have no questions left out. I need a motion, please.
I have a sort of vote of approval for the special education playground. It's about $93,470.3 cents. What measure of funds is it, please, simply?
I have a motion by Henry, and a second by Carrie. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, that passes. Five oh. Okay, now we go into, we have a presentation from our facilities committee. We're going to begin with Shannon, is that right?
Jerry's gonna make me turn this on. The round one?
Top one. It's red.
While they're getting that, really, I want to welcome all of you that are here tonight. Glad to see you here to hear our presentation.
All right, good evening, thank you all for coming on a special night tonight. We have been meeting, a lot of our committee members are here, we're very excited. We have staff, we have admins, we have community members, we have parents, we have grandparents on our committee. We've met four times. We thought it would just be an hour or two, some of them went three or four hours. They were very in-depth, they were very thoughtful. We went on field trips, we had a bus driver, took us around, and we toured all the campuses, which was very eye-opening. A lot of times we're stuck on our own campus, or our own district, our own department. And we see a lot of the middle school and high school, but seeing the intermediate and elementary was kind of eye-opening for some of us. And so, they also looked at Sledge's facility survey that y'all seen in the last year and a half that we've been looking at, had $88 million worth of recommendations. And so, the committee has kind of taken that, looked at their findings, and reduced it to about $32 million that they'd like to recommend for y'all to prioritize in the next week or so. Like I said, we've met four times, it seems like a quick turnaround, but each meeting, I feel, was very productive. We also even during, for the meetings, it was put in the paper, it was emailed to district staff, and it was even sent to individual stakeholders. We also, in the middle of the process, after we had some ideas, sent another survey to district staff, and parents and communities, community members, where they could voice their opinion once again. The feedback from all of these things showed the greatest needs are in the area of safety and security for our students, and accommodating the growing brand program. Based on this feedback, Region 20 and Sledge has updated their project costs, because it has been a year, year and a half, and their planning budget. So, the prices you'll see this evening are a little bit different from the original survey. I want to point out that this is not in any particular order, nobody has prioritized any project. I'm going to start at the elementary and move up. So, the first one, at Severa Elementary. They are recommending the new early childhood center, new elementary parking and drop-off, new enclosed corridors, miscellaneous campus improvements, and a new cafeteria. To look at that a little bit closer, the early childhood center, it's actually a combination of the pre-K classrooms, a new office area, parking lot, and gym. The office at the elementary is just inconvenient. And so, what this would be, would make the office more visible, more secure, and parking, it's just not sufficient. So, adding additional parking would also help the parking across the street and the traffic of those people walking back and forth crossing that street. We did even have a little incident earlier in the year with one of our own staff members crossing that street to get to the school side. The pre-K portables, we've talked a lot about. And pre-K's here to stay. And so, we need to give those students the same equitable facilities as we give the rest of our students. There is a plan for a portable coming up soon. We don't know the timeline on that quite yet, and if we do get it, we'll welcome it, we'll set it up. This would take two to three years, we could use it during that time, and then if this goes through, we could always use that building for the technology center, or something else. With pre-K so far away, because we, not only are their buildings, when you go in, kind of shaky, they're the farthest from everything, they're the farthest from the office, they're the farthest from the nurse, they're the farthest from the cafeteria. I think it was a 20-minute hike to lunch, Gutierrez, just to go to lunch is like 20 minutes, to get, to round them all up in the line from one, from point A to point B. This office area, it would just be, when you, if you're new to the line and you're enrolling your kid at Severa Elementary, you could go onto that campus, you don't know where to park, if you do find a parking spot, then you're walking around through those spences, trying to find the office. It's not, it's not that easy, it's not that very friendly. Relocating that office would help a lot of situations at that campus. The office would be in the red number one box, the classroom and offices and gym. But what was also wanted was, and we put cafeteria, but what we're really more thinking, it's not going to have a kitchen. It'll be down on number five, and it'll be more like a dining area. It'll maybe take two cafeteria staff members to facilitate it, but it won't, we'll take the food over there like we do for breakfast. And so, we won't have the expense of a kitchen, it'll more be just a dining area, but it could also be used for like, end of six weeks award ceremonies, and things like that. This would alleviate that crossing from one campus to the other, which is so predictable. Everybody knows what time everybody goes to lunch. We even had a video made with students crossing it, and how it could turn into maybe a not-so-good situation at one time. Another thing they requested, and it was, it looked pretty obvious, that building's old, I went to school there, it's old. When we did the Kinder Wing, at one time it was open, and then we put that gated fence up, and then we eventually built the wall and windows. And that's what they're asking to do between each building where there's an open sidewalk, because these kiddos do go to the nurse, they do go to the office, they do go to the counselor, to enclose any of those sidewalks with walls and windows. So, they're always inside and never outside.
The exterior is going to be unlocked, but everything inside will be unlocked, so it's not, you just have to get up and, you know, absolutely nothing.
Are there any questions on the elementary proposal?
You said the kitchen on the elevator campus, on the cafeteria? Does this number here include a kitchen?
We asked them to not include a kitchen. We asked them for the price without...
Because that plus the duck.
That's what we asked, without the kitchen.
The, I can, Jen, would it be pre-K or two, or would it be K or two, or who has access?
It would be pre-K or two. Any other questions? Okay, yes.
Would you open two, is that a parking option?
Yes, yes. Okay, the intermediate campus. If you've been to the intermediate lately, we did open up a window where Ms. Jay will let you in. It's not ideal, it'll work for now, but they would like the best vestibule, like we spoke about a couple of years ago. It wouldn't be that complicated, we have the space, we would just need the walls to go up. Since Mr. Gomez has been there, he has noticed with this, with the doors being closed, that there's not a restroom out in the science wing, where the old Ag building was. When they remodeled that, there's no bathroom in there. And so, when kids need to use the restroom, they're coming out of the classroom into the open, cafeteria is locked, the portables are locked, so they're having to come all the way to the office bathroom to use the restroom. And so, he is requesting some new restrooms in that area. There wasn't a whole lot at the intermediate, that was pretty much it, vestibule and maybe restrooms. Are there any questions on the intermediate?
I pulled the elementary to have a lunch at the elementary campus. Streamline of eating at the elementary also, because that's a scheduling lunch.
Between lunchtime and specials, that drives that whole day for both campuses, and staffing. Yes.
If you build a number two, will it have a number two?
Number one will, I believe.
Is your number one, sorry?
Yes.
And with the yellow, basically the yellow would be tunnels or covered pieces, so none of the kids, if you went from number one to number five, you'd never have this outside of the room.
Also, a number one would be the campus administrators, the nurse, and the counselor. At this time, they're at three different places on that campus. So, if your child is sick, they'll go to the nurse, they'll go to the office to pick them up, but then they have to send somebody to the nurse, come pick them up at the office, and yeah.
And then, you can re-assess that area for...
Yes. Yes, yes. Okay, moving on to middle school. That library has been small for a while, we've outgrown that with the number of kiddos we have at that campus. The idea is to move it kind of back into that stage area. That stage area isn't quite used as much as we thought it would be, and so, to expand it that way, then the library could have more bookshelf space, more collaborative space, and more storage. By the time we got to middle school, it was our third campus, and we were getting kind of antsy, but when we walked through those locker rooms, everybody went, "Oh my goodness, wow." They're sharing lockers, they're dressing not necessarily in the room, but in hallways, and just wherever they can find space. Again, those locker rooms are not, they're not big enough for that campus. And so, one of the recommendations is adding locker rooms. We're not sure where, we're going to leave that to the professionals, but they're definitely needed. And then miscellaneous improvements, when we say that, it's Casey from Sledge was saying simple things like light fixtures, and ceiling tiles, and floor tiles, and paint, that really makes a difference when you up, to upgrade a campus. And so, each campus has that miscellaneous, and that's what that's referring to. Any questions or comments on middle school?
So, can we extend the library, extend the middle school theater, or can you, that all the way to that stage, but, you're, you're, kind of put it on that house?
Yes, yes, that will be shared by, yes. So, going to the high school. The main thing that they would like at the high school is to relocate the administration offices downstairs. It's kind of where the old cafeteria used to be, right now it's housing technology. We think it'd be pretty easy to move technology either back to the Ag building, and then everybody, the administrators, their counselors, and their whole admin team down on the first floor. We're having some issues right now with those stairs, and they'll, they're going to be, they're being worked on, but even when they, they were okay, that's a hike, to go up to the stairs, to go up to the office. And then, you're still not in the office when you get to the door, you have to call, and someone has to let you in. Relocating it downstairs would make it safer and just more convenient. Where the current administration area is, there's a couple of ideas to do there, but it would be renovated to some kind of student use. And then, they, I can't see my numbers, number nine is where they're recommending a new band hall. A lot of us haven't been in the band hall, we might drop our kiddos off, but we've never walked in it. It is small, there's a lot of chairs in there, there's not enough room for our instruments, those instruments are very expensive, we spend a lot of money on those. There's not enough storage for the uniforms, those are very expensive. And practice rooms, they don't always practice in just one big group, they break off, and there's not enough rooms for each section to go practice. And so, we're proposing a new and bigger band hall. The old band hall would then be converted into a black box theater, where when act plays and drama, can practice. Are there any questions?
And you said that would be a shared space with middle and high?
Yes. Yes, it would still continue to be shared.
And for anybody that hasn't been in there, it's separated to where Mr. Miller conducts band, and then there's another section towards the back. The section towards the back would actually become the theater arts classroom, and then the, the, the black box theater would be in the part where the current, where we conduct band class.
Well, there's a couple of different future growth, they could take it up for us.
I don't think we have this, I don't have the size.
I would imagine that they're not going to build a band hall. The design would not be for what we currently have. Everything that, that they propose usually encompasses a growth in that strategic facilities plan that they did a year and a half ago for us. There's a page in there, and I'll pull it up and I'll email it to everybody tomorrow, but it shows growth trends, what they expect, what we've shown over the last 10 years, what they expect the next 10 years. And so, nothing worse than going through projects like this, and then two years it'd be too small. They're probably involved in about 18 different other school district projects right now, so this is kind of their specialty for sure.
So...
But good question.
It's where that red nine is.
It's the red box. Yes, the nine in white is the current one. It's kind of between the Ag building and the waitroom. I don't have those specs, Dr. Grandjean, do you have?
No.
And when I was asking earlier today about a spacing, they said this is just an estimate, it is not a sure thing, that would come after.
Okay.
Yeah. And Mr. Miller, I'm going to put you on the spot, what are your numbers in middle school and high school at this time?
Yep, so right now, in the middle school, we're running about 180, I believe. And in the high school, we're a little bit over this year because of October 12th, so we're at just under 100, whereas only, we were inching up to 120, 130. So, we're pushing towards that 350 mark, I think, pretty quickly, as things are coming back to normal, but we're seeing really large, six-credit classes coming up, and it's happened again, the last couple of years, it's been ramping up like this, and I'm pretty sure we ran out of space somewhere in the early 1990s. I think I know, Dr. Grandjean, that the next thing I'm going to request for change, you know, the main instrument for seating.
Oh my goodness.
The only space we have left at this point. And the teaching space is also extremely limited, and there are times when crews need to be advised off, and if you get the portable building behind us, that's helped us some, you know, we use the stage for some of them, and that's helped us also, but, the space to stay competitive with kind of 4A programs, and we will need this program for the fall.
Any questions on the high school area? The special education building was a part of the facilities study. We actually didn't go tour it, but it is, it was on the recommendation list. It's just a very old building, they assure us it's structurally sound, it just needs some remodeling, it needs new, we're not going to gut it, but just, again, paint, walls, maybe a couple of new ceiling tiles, but now, at this time today, 12 people are housed there. And so, there's a couple of offices that are shared, you know, I'm in, you're in, type of thing, I'm here Tuesday, you're here Wednesday, type of thing. And so, on number two is where, what we used to call the birdhouse, and so, we would add in addition for more office space in area two. Also redoing the walls and such, in this building especially, there's a lot of confidentiality, and it's hard to have a meeting, or a conversation and discussion, or even a phone call through those walls. So, when we would remodel that, we would keep that in mind, and make sure it's secure and confidential in each of the rooms. Are there any questions? Yes.
Since that is a very old building, is there any reason we'd be doing, we keep that structure as not...
Casey was pretty adamant that, it's actually a really good building, it just needs some renovation.
And that's why, I think when they first came to do their strategic facilities plan, the reason that that is approached that way is, because I had only been here a year when we first started working on all of this, two years ago, I thought it was extremely, I thought it was special to the community, and so, I mentioned that to them, so, there's a possibility that they could talk, it depends, I mean, you know, have, I know that...
I mean, it doesn't have any historical value or anything, does it?
Not that I know of.
I don't know, for sure, but that's definitely an option.
Okay, moving to our outside facilities. This year during Friday Night Football, our maintenance group tried to make some additional ADA parking for some of our people that require that, so, we blocked it off, but they still had to block down a hill in the dirt and dodge oncoming traffic. And so, we do need additional parking, we do need to kind of revamp both the visitor and home entrance to make it ADA compliant. I've worked that visitor gate, it's, you're coming right off the road, and we just need to make it more welcoming. When we talk about the track, a lot of people use our track, and when they're walking around in the regular circles, they don't see what we see. A lot of what we're talking about are in those other areas, the high jump area, the long jump area, the pole vault area, right now they're almost unusable, they're so bad. And so, it's time that we do it one way or the other, resurfacing all the pieces of the track. And then, we added the four new tennis courts, and I'm going to let Ms. Darnell talk about practice sign, and her numbers in middle school and high school.
So, this is for middle, right now, we haven't started yet, we just got a list of kids. We have 41 seventh graders coming out, and this is last year, we have 25 eighth graders coming out, that's not counting our high school kids. We run a practice at 6:15 in the morning, to 8 o'clock, that's the seventh grade. And then, eighth grade, this year, we're trying to figure out how we're going to do this, because high school athletics and eighth grade athletics same time, so we're trying to figure out how we're going to do eighth grade and JV and varsity all at one time. We've got a plan, but, but right now, it's what we normally do, is we have eighth graders out there, they leave at four, JV comes in, they leave at 5:30, 6 o'clock, varsity comes in, anywhere from 5:30, 6 o'clock, and we finish about 7:30, 8 o'clock. And that's generally Monday through Thursday, we use the playoff Friday.
And we're doing spring and fall tennis now.
And we're doing fall and spring tennis, we do team tennis in the fall, and then we do spring, and it's only high school in the fall, but in spring, it's ever done. So, our practice is, we live out there, we live in the mall, in the mall, and if we have one court, we could actually run two different practices at one time, we could actually get home early.
So, 60 kids in the middle school, what are high school numbers like?
Right now, well, we had to do some cuts, just so we can get enough court space for the kids, so we're running about three or five kids, 40 kids, but we're down to about 20 right now.
So, if you had more courts, more kids would have an opportunity to stick with it?
Yes, well, because we can actually, when you're trying to practice, we need to give the singles players time to play, because we would give the doubles time to play in doubles. So, we're having to run drill teams here, so they can play, and when they improve, switch them out, so we're not getting as much playing time as what we could get for our kids, because we're having to run drills, like 20, 30 kids running one drill, these three courts that we use to play. And we have mixed doubles, we have girls' doubles, we have boys' doubles, girls' singles, boys'. Trying to coordinate all of that, and, you know, us, I guess, can you say later, so we can play some more? Okay, guys, not tired, but sure, I'll say, so I say later, so they can have license and play a lot more.
And I saw your middle school schedule today, and were able to host a match for two at that grade level, but high school, all of yours are travel, and again, more late nights.
Yep, high school, we can have, we have eight, we can actually run first, right now we can, and we can, when we play team tennis in the fall, nobody wants to play, it's a full match, we play six girls' single matches, six for boys' double matches, three doubles, three doubles in the beginning, and that's all day long. So, if you have eight courts, you can run some big type of tennis stadium, if you want to, and right now, there's no way. And our junior high, that's, we run pony sets, and it's four games, six and a half straight sets, we can't even play a full set with those guys. First, under four games, just so we get plenty of playing time for all those kids.
And the track and the tennis courts, I mean, we don't lock those up, right? Anybody that wants to, when y'all learn on the tennis courts, anybody in the community that wants to use them, comes and plays.
Right now, they're limited, because the sensor on the lights button, not working.
Oh.
So, like, that's why I say, normally, I turn off the lights, because we have a manual switch, and normally, you turn that on, they hit the button, and it stays out very long, but that's not working, so that's why I say, keep the lights on for the kids, so, until that gets fixed.
And I, and I...
Just like, tennis is a very successful company, you know, she's done very well with what she brings to that.
And I think this was the slide I asked, is that where the courts are going, and they said this isn't necessarily exactly where things are going to be placed, but just, I guess that this...
Like Shannon said, they just, they just put tennis courts on there, that's not the final resting place that they would be if... the final resting place that they would be if that was a part of something that we would consider. They just kinda try to put it there. And the reason that there's a softball field up there is eventually sometime in the next hundred years, we would maybe wanna move that. We wouldn't do anything to the existing softball field because they could keep it for practice, and I have found that kiddos and divine the younger kiddos, they need as much place to practice, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't get rid of the old one. But that's not part of this plan.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say.
We, we're just, when they try to lay it all out, they, we asked them to see what would fit, you know, so you have everything together and try to be proactive and long-term, sorry to interrupt.
No? Any other questions?
Would any money go to the old courts that puts more for nothing, or they just?
We just refurbished, refurbished the current.
Yes.
We just refurbished the current course this year, right?
Yes.
Yes, and that cost about thirty?
It was thirty-six.
What about, um, does it include anything like concession stands or anything at the tennis courts?
At this time, no, we've been talking about, um, like the corridors and the different things that we've seen at Germantown and Uvalde and all the other newer.
Restrooms? Does it include restrooms?
No.
I don't think this price does.
And when, when we adopted the facilities plan, talk amongst the group was really that we would hope to see eight new courts at some point, was on the facilities plan that we adopted, that was an addition that we made at the very end. But.
I just know it's a long hike over to the restrooms to the tennis courts. It is, and the, the kids are having to try to hurry and get over there and get back so they can play. And for an old lady like me, it takes months to get back, you know?
And so, we thank you for your time tonight, it was, it was great to be a part of this committee. They, they really had the students in mind, you heard what's best for students more often in the conversation over and over and over, what's best for our students, what's best for students, what's best for instruction. They got really excited about this, and they, they didn't wanna wait, they wanted to present their findings to you. Um, like I said, we had videos, we had field trips, and we had lots of discussion. Um, so, good, thank you.
Would you mind if the people that were on that committee would stand so that we know who you are? That's great, y'all put in a lot of work, we really do appreciate it.
We missed in about twenty-five or thirty more at some point or other, I think altogether we had fifty-two people that were involved.
Misty has a little binder. This facility survey doesn't have it, she has the answer, she has it highlighted, marked, and everything, there was a lot of thought into this.
It sounds like a real diverse group also, so that.
It was, I was fortunate to be able to sit in on most of these meetings, and like she said, they were, everybody was excited about it, they really, there was a lot of talk and communication back and forth amongst the group. And even when it came down to, hey, we got too much money, and we're not, there's no way that we can put all the bond, there was a lot of talk and discussion going on of, hey, okay, this, this is what we need. Those were wants, this is need, let's stick with our needs. And it was really neat to watch and listen to everybody come together with this number right here, it was, it was, it was neat.
One of the things that stuck with me is that our last meeting, Coach E's made a point, he said, everything we have on that list, at some point, every single kid in our district is gonna be touched by that list that we gave y'all.
Well, it certainly is a, a very big project for us to look at, and, uh, you know, with the economy, we have to consider everything. But you have really done a yeoman's work in, in getting this all together for us. And let us see what you feel are the priorities, because that's what we needed to know. We, we had already determined most of what you've come up with, is what we felt are, uh, the priorities were. We knew that safety and security for our kids was important. Some of the programs were growing so fast, we needed to get some facilities to accommodate those. We're gonna need all of your help to convince our public of that, that this is something that they will need to pay for. And, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough thing to do. But, um, if you will come through with the enthusiasm you showed tonight, I think we can get it done, so. We will have another meeting to discuss what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it, and, um, we just appreciate everything that you've done. Does anybody else have any questions or any statements that you'd like to make before we adjourn? Anybody on the board have anything, so? Okay, all right, then I'll, thank you very much, I'll call for an adjournment. Okay, I have a motion by Henry to, and a second by Chris to adjourn, all in favor, raise your right hand. Pass the six oh, thank you very much.
We're going home at seven thirty?
I know, can you believe it?